Right now.
All right, I'm gonna call this to order. The special closed session of the City of Emeryville. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. All right, Ex parte communications. Let's allow a quick public comment on that.
Oh, no, first for ex parte communications, Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from item 5.3.3 due to a conflict related to the proximity of my residence to the subject property.
Great, any other ex parte communications? All right, none for me. Public comment on closed session items. We're running around public, there he is.
Good evening, members of the City Council, Madam Mayor. John Bowders.
I am for the record.
My name is John Bowders, I'm a member of the Emeryville Public, and I'm here briefly with regard to item 5.3.3. You may have received an email earlier today from the Park Avenue Residents Committee. I know you will be deliberating on some terms in negotiations with Lennar Multifamily Corporation. Just wanted to say two things. One, that the Park Avenue Residents Committee, which represents the Horton Street Lofts, the Artist Street, Forty-Fifth Street Artist Cooperative, Blue Star Corner HOA, and the 1500 Park Building, has had productive conversations with the developer around their site plan and other proposed timelines and uses. We would ask that whatever you're considering this evening, given that I don't know what that is, that you work with staff to ask and enforce with Lennar security protocols that be implemented and that there be adequate assurances from Lennar that failure to comply with the requests that the residents have made related to fencing, security cameras, and ensuring that subcontractors do not park on the streets in the neighborhood since they're gonna be requesting off-street parking opportunities on the property, that there be some hooks in that to ensure the city can enforce that on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, let's move into closed session.
We're good to go.
All right, let's report out a closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The Emeryville City Council met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda. Regarding all items under 5.1, an update was provided. Regarding all items under 5.2, an update was provided. Regarding item 5.3.1, an update was provided. Regarding item 5.3.2, an update was provided. And regarding item 5.3.3, an update was provided and direction was given. That's the conclusion of my report, thank you.
Thank you. Let's adjourn closed session at 7:02. We'll be back at 7:15, everyone. The City of Emeryville is a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency meeting at 7:16 PM. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. Can I get approval of the final agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Potts, a second by Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none. Any public comment for items on the consent agenda or items not on this agenda, the successor agency? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion for consent?
Moved.
Check it.
All right, moved by Member Bowder, a second by Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, no action items, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, I called to order the regular, uh, regular City Council meeting for the City of Emeryville at 7:17 PM. Let's, uh, we don't need to call the roll, we are all still here. Great approval of the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Potts, sorry, Vice Mayor Potts, and a second by Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, special orders of the day. Let's get down there. I'd like to call up Charlie Bryant and Chad Smalley.
I know. I am taking a break from my normal ice-out on proclamations for a very special occasion, a proclamation honoring and commending Catherine Furpro upon her retirement from the City of Emeryville and Community Development and Department, Economic Development and Housing Division after eight years of continuous and outstanding service. All right, whereas on January 18, 2011, Catherine Furpro was hired as the Community and Economic Development Coordinator in the Economic Development and Housing Department, and from that time to her last day on the job, April 5, 2019, has distinguished herself as a valued public servant. And whereas, following the merger of the Economic Development and Housing Department with the Planning and Building Department to create the Community Development Department, Catherine stepped up and agreed to serve as the Acting Manager of the Economic Development and Housing Division for five and a half months, 2015 to 2016, prior to the hiring of a permanent manager in May 2016, which was no easy task, and her willingness to provide leadership to the division during these difficult times was very greatly appreciated. And whereas Catherine was an instrumental in delivering projects, administering programs, and developing policies that produce, maintain, and retain affordable housing, activities that provide individuals and families with homes and make Emeryville accessible to all. And whereas, projects maintained by Catherine include 87 units of affordable housing for families in Estrella Vista at 3706 San Pablo Avenue, and 69 units of affordable housing in the Ambassador Housing at 3610 Peralta Street. And whereas, programs administered by Catherine include the city's first-time homebuyer line loan program, the minor home repair program, I'm not used to doing a whole proclamation in one breath, sorry guys. Both the ownership and rental below-market rate unit programs, the city's support of the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, ECAP, and the city's support programs for people experiencing homelessness, and whereas, thank you. Policies analyzed and developed by Catherine include the city's Affordable Housing Impact Fee, Residential Landlord and Tenant Relations Ordinance, and the city's homelessness strategy. And in addition, Catherine continually monitored and analyzed state legislation relating to affordable housing and homelessness issues. And whereas, because of her exemplary work ethic, commitment to equity, and genuine compassion, Catherine has had a material impact on the City of Emeryville, with over 2.2 million in funding dedicated for affordable housing generated by the Housing Impact Fee, an increase of over 50% in the city's stock of affordable housing units, with the result that income-restricted units now comprise approximately 12% of the city's total housing stock. And whereas Catherine's impact on the City of Emeryville has extended far beyond statistical measures, as her actions and dedication to her role have resulted in ongoing significant improvements in community members' lives. And whereas Catherine provided the ability for individuals and families to move to or to remain in their community, near their friends, families, and their schools, to have shelter, to have a place they can call home now. Therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby extends its sincere appreciation for Catherine Furpro for eight years of continuous and honorable service to the City of Emeryville and its citizens. If it further resolved, that is the mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council, the people of Emeryville, the City of Emeryville, we extend our good wishes to Catherine Furpro for the very best in her retirement and future endeavors, proclaimed the second day of April 2019 by the mayor of the City of Emeryville.
I moved out of the way because I was like... Thank you for the kind words and the information on all the things that Emeryville has accomplished while I've been here. And I also need to acknowledge my predecessors in this position, Amy Hestand, Autumn Bus, and Mary Ann Leschen, all dedicated housers who created and grew the Affordable Housing Program to what it is today in Emeryville. I could not have done my job without the great people I work with here at the City of Emeryville and my colleagues also in neighboring cities and in Alameda County and at the State of California. We all worked together to try and produce affordable housing and good housing policy. Throughout my 28 years, total 28 years of public service, I've had many great managers and mentors, many of them here in Emeryville, and I'm going out on top with Chad, Charlie, and Christine. Finally, I'd like to thank the City Councils, present and past, for providing the leadership that can be, that the city can be proud of in its providing affordable housing and creating good housing policy. Thank you.
Announcement of Commission Committee vacancies.
No announcements tonight, you'll make some appointments later on on the agenda.
Will do. Councilmember Special Announcements reports on meetings attended. We all went to a party. We went to the Economic Development Awards for Innovation with two Emeryville businesses that were nominees, Gristona Oncology and Kikoko. We are very proud to support our nominees this year. Anything else? Okay, no other announcements. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that next Wednesday, April 10, at ECCL, will be a meeting hosted by Caltrans regarding their proposed project at the Carthay Mays. And so we just, we're gonna continue to push that information out and encourage everyone to attend that meeting again, the 10th, at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Any ex parte communications to report?
Madam Mayor, just the late correspondence that we all received from Bird, Lime, Lift, and Spin, and a copy of this letter is available for the public on the table at the base of the stairs.
Yes.
Same, I also had a conversation with Townsend Public Affairs about item 12.4.
Okay, thank you. All right, public comment for items on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? I have a couple cards, actually, so we'll start off with Jordan Wax.
People of Emeryville, City Council, good evening. I saw that the, that the City Council agenda was amended, so I was really hoping that this was going to make it, since I see it as an emergent crisis. We talk about the environmental crisis, the housing crisis, but we don't seem to be talking about the logo crisis yet. I'm talking, of course, of the fact that Member Bowders, last week, gave a presentation to a number of people on the history of Emeryville, and we learned during that presentation, the most salient fact is that the negative space in our logo is an interchange. I really don't know how long we can tolerate this situation, so I'm calling for a new logo to be designed. The, the sky is the limit, obviously, but if we were to go with a crest, I had some suggestions, again, out of Member Bowders' presentation on our colorful history for any items that could go on the crest. First, I have here a, a police car with a liquor barrel strapped on top, a burning ballot box.
I almost wish we could put up this projector.
A, a pile of meat. Or, my personal favorite, a splay of playing cards where the face cards are old white men in mayor hats punching each other, but also looking towards our future because we like transit like a bus or something. But seriously, seriously though, you know, politics and policy always about how are we expressing our values and how are we living our values? I don't really know, like, what values we're expressing with a logo that looks like it's from a dark future where we have to pay Coca-Cola for snowflakes. We have a census year coming up, we're going to require some new signage, and what better year than 2020 to say that we are seeing the future clearly, and having a logo that sends the same message that we want to send to Caltrans in the coming few days, that Emeryville is not your interchange. So let's get a new logo that tells people what Emeryville is. Thank you.
Megan Colford, have fun following that. Come to speak about consent item 10.8.
Fortunately, I don't know that my comments will be as fun or funny, so I apologize in advance. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff. My name is Megan Colford, I'm with Lime, it's good to see you again. You all have received the letter from the Joint Operator, so I won't go into the details of that, but I am here in person to kind of echo what's in there, that we remain very concerned about the indemnification and insurance language in the proposed scooter ordinance that's on your consent agenda tonight. We do believe that we can work collaboratively with the city, as we are in other cities, to find a resolution. We've got plenty of lawyers on our team who are working on this all across the country, and we would love to continue to do that with city staff. We just ask that tonight you consider removing it from consent agenda, not passing it until we can have those meetings and really come to a resolution that works for everyone. We have had to make hard decisions in other markets, not to operate based on indemnification language, and we certainly don't want to do that in Emeryville, we want to serve Emeryville. So I, I'm happy to answer questions, but that is my message for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for consent agenda items or items not on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I don't think I have a, a good news, I'm going to talk about money. And I remember a couple years ago, there was a half a million dollar that was given to, I don't see a bunch of girl, but to a group that called Fair Work Week. And it was passed, and a half a million dollar was given to this group there. And since it was public money, then I was wondering if I could see the result, has any business being busted for violating the work week? I mean, I, I need to know if, what happened to our half a million dollar to an enforcement of the work, the Fair Work Week? I mean, it's, it's something that, a half a million dollar, you don't get that out of, in a pocket, you know? But I pay tax for 50 years here in this town, so I'm, I'm entitled to know every penny that is being spent or given away. Second thing, I made an objection several months ago about paying $120,000, excuse me, yeah, $120,000 to the City of Auckland for the maintenance of the library. And, and I say at that time, nobody used the library. Every time I go to the library, people play on the computer or look at advertising and all that, you know, but people sending email, I'm, I'm the only one. And so I'm objecting on that, I really, really would like to, if we cannot revise that, to make a, a study on the, on the money that is spent for the library for next year. And also now, on the issue of homeless, the homeless, all they need is money. If you don't get any money, so that they become regular customer, client, you give them money, and then the, the street will be clean, they'll be like you and me, they have a car, and they'll be to rent an apartment and all that. They don't need to work. Lots of people make lots of money without working, that I know, and I can prove that. So I'm gonna make a point here that the policy of homeless here should be changed in giving people money instead of encampment, instead of, you know, another apartheid there in the camp, little barracks, you know, concentration camp with guards and machine gun in case they have a fight, you know? I don't want to see that, that's, this is bad. Give them the people who need money, give them money, give them a check, a great check, whatever.
Thank you. Any other public comment for consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, as a point of personal privilege, may I make a brief comment?
You may.
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Jordan for coming in, I just want to use the opportunity to do two things. One, I want to thank Charlie Bryant, who was a wealth of resources for me to prepare a presentation on the history of Emeryville at Nerd Night, and I would just also recommend if you've never been to East Bay Nerd Night, you should really look into it and go, it's an excellent opportunity to learn a lot of good things about stuff you didn't know. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity. But yeah, I learned a lot about stuff, including our, our logo, and don't disagree with anything you say, Jordan, don't know how realistic it is to change it, but I don't disagree with anything you say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Potts, and a second by Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, we have a public hearing, 11.1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, authorizing the Chief Police to issue a cabaret license to Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe for calendar year 2019. Do we have a presentation on this? Captain Collins? Oh, hi.
Hi. Hello, City Council.
We want to wait for Captain Collins real quick.
I'm sorry, I thought it was me.
You'll do, do it together.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is a annual renewal for a cabaret permit for Can't Fail Cafe, and the Police Department has done a record search of calls for service in that, from that facility over the 2018 year, and there were not any significant calls for service consisting or impacting above and beyond what would normally be, we would consider normal activity in this area of the city. The immunity code section 5-4.03 provides license required to operate the cabaret permit in the City of Emeryville. The application is submitted to the Police Department, which the applicant did. We reviewed that in its entirety and found it to be accurate, and at this point, we in, are recommending that the cabaret license be approved by the Council under the conditions of approval set forth in the staff report. So, that's all I have.
Okay.
Brief, but it's nothing that we have.
All right, thank you. Want to hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Councilmember, it's Mayor. I'm Doug Smith.
Oh, this is, okay, sorry, we'll do this as a part of the public hearing, real quick. Any clarifying questions for the officer? Nope? All right, I'm gonna open this public hearing at 7:35 PM.
Madam Mayor. If I could just, just for the, the public who are listening, just to amplify the captain's presentation, so again, this would be a, this is a new cabaret permit at this location, the hours of operation would be Monday through Sunday from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. So I just want to clarify that that's, that's the hours of operation we're talking about.
Okay. He said renewal, you're saying new, I was under the impression this was a new.
This is new?
This is new.
Yeah, just clarifying the...
That, I just, thank you, I assumed I was wrong, I'm...
I just have one clarifying question, which is, are we opening the public hearing for him, or because he's the applicant, can't he make his own presentation before the public hearing?
That's what I thought, then everyone shouted "public hearing" at me.
I, I think he should be allowed to make a presentation.
You can certainly have the applicant have the, put his presentation first and then open the public hearing.
All right, so we've not opened the public hearing yet, the applicant, we're gonna hear from the applicant, then we're gonna go ahead and open that public hearing. It's you, sorry.
Hello, everyone, I'm Doug Smith, the manager and co-owner of Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe. I'm also a Berkeley College musical, I'm not from Boston, Mass, and play jazz piano. For a long time, I've looked at our restaurant as, you know, how can we increase our business in the evening? And I think one of the things, especially with the push for the arts center here right across the street from us, it's lent an opportunity to have, a chance to have some small combos, you know, a jazz trio out front. We have new lighting that's making the street safer, as well as giving us an opportunity to present guest musicians. And the whole idea is just to add a little bit of live music to the restaurant and to give it a little more life as part of our economic development of our business. One of the goals also is to kind of tie in the fact that we have a music-based restaurant with Mike Dern from Green Day as one of the co-owners, that's pretty well-known, we're not gonna have Green Day play there, absolutely. It's gonna be more like a solo guitar player, or piano, bass, and drums, you're out. So that's kind of the idea, was bringing live music into the venue and doing it the way the city wants us to do it, as opposed to do it without being permitted to do it. So it's taken about five or six months to get to this point, hopefully we can move forward and start to have some live entertainment and hopefully see you there, too.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions?
Just want to double-check your sure Green Day, you know, like, some of us went to high school in the early 90s, so, sure, okay, just checking.
I do have a question, so it's from 6:00 to 11:00 PM, and that includes, I'm assuming, on Tues, I believe, on Tuesdays as well as part of the permit application.
Right.
Do you think you're gonna have special programming for council nights? Like, are we gonna get a special serenade? Because we might be able to hear it if we open a window.
Request it, we could make it happen.
That's a good Green Day night.
I would, I would mention that we're really looking at having music like one night a week.
Yeah.
The way that was written, Sunday through Monday, I mean, we're not gonna have music every night of the week.
Okay.
I highly doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:38 PM. Any public comment on this item? Yes?
Mayor Medina, Councilmembers, and City Staff, my name is Benjamin Yee. My family are the owners of the Can't Fail Cafe. We bought the place in 1964 and ran it continuously for 36 years until 2000. My disgust, Doug came to me and asked my opinion of it, and I brought this up to my family, and we're in favor of what he proposes. I live across the street in the only house catty-corner from the City Hall, and you can believe me, if I have any problem with it, I will tell you. But Doug is a great guy, I've known him for 13 years, and, you know, I, we, our family fully supports his venue. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Ben.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right, I close this public hearing at 7:39, that was a quick one, and opens up for discussion.
Move approval of the resolution.
I have a quick comment, so I'm gonna jump in before you.
Okay.
Do that. So I like the idea a lot, and I'm gonna be supporting this. I just want to encourage you, we have a great music program at the ECCL, to find a jazz combo there. We were recently at the Innovation Awards, and I want to say the Berkeley provided a wonderful jazz combo there. At your prior location upstairs from there, some great jazz combos as well, so I just want to throw that out there, and with that, I'll let you guys make your motion.
But wait, wait, I, I want a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get right in there, Member Donahue.
I just heard some fabulous reggae mixed in with jazz improvisation with a little bit of Hawaiian in there. It was fabulous. Amazing fusion music, three-piece combo, it was really great. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Was that a friendly amendment to put the programming list on?
Approval.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I've got a motion.
I'm moving the resolution as, as it is.
I'm seconding it.
Member Martinez, a second from Member Bowders.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
An enthusiastic yes.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Get back to your specific Tuesday night recommendations. Thank you. All right. Action items, 12.1, we have a resolution, City Council of the City of Emeryville, appointing two residents to serve on the Commission of Aging for Terms Come and Seen Immediately and Ending June 30, 2021. There's nobody here? None of the applicants, oh.
The applicants have been invited, there's no staff presentation.
There's no staff presentation, so we're gonna hear from the applicants?
Yes.
Okay, no, you're, you're right on time, sorry, you're right.
Right on time, come on down.
Come on down. There's just no staff presentation, so it's you. No, you're in an excellent order.
Right on time.
Okay, hi, oh, good, thank you. Never been to a council meeting before?
Welcome.
Thank you, glad, glad to be here. My name is David Adams, and as I said, I'm an applicant to the, to join the Commission on Aging. I have attended several meetings informally, and I am looking forward to the opportunity to be a formal member from now on. I have taken part in a number of the discussions already, and I have particularly focused on or concentrated on, because it concerns me personally, a lot of pedestrian safety issues in the city, walking, because I walk, and whether it's, I know, like, there was some conversation, the San Pablo Forty Street intersection, it's, I guess there've been a lot of issues there, just big white streets, it's tough for older people sometimes to, just to make the lights on time, and I know, too, I, we talked some about, I don't know when the accident was, there was a fatal accident, I don't know when it was, the ramp coming off Powell Street, and, you know, there's a lot of, I, I don't have a brilliant answer about that intersection there, because it's Shawmount Street and Powell, very nasty, and I...
nasty. And I unfortunately had met, actually, the widow of a man who was killed, I don't know when it was, in a nasty accident at that. And we've had a lot of conversations, and unfortunately, I think not any really great answers. But that's a big, big, big problem. And if I can bring even one small positive idea, I would love to. I have been here in Emeryville for about three, actually, a little less than three years now. I live at, officially, it's Watermark by the Bay now, but you'll probably think it was Bayside Park. And I, my background is that I have an MBA in healthcare management, and extensive work in nonprofits, first hospitals, and mostly nonprofit elder services. And that was all in Norfolk County, Massachusetts, which is, someone else from Boston, right? It's southwest suburbs of Boston. And it's, the agency that I worked for was called HESCO Elder Services. And I was, did a little research. It's basically comparable to the Alameda County Agency on Aging. It's same funding, same basic legal, federal legal mission. And I, the mission of the agency I worked for was to assist local seniors to stay in, it was outer suburban. We were trying to help people stay in their homes that, in most cases, they had lived in for many, many years. And that, as they age, of course, it was becoming more and more difficult for many people. And we were able, through combination of state and federal money coming into us, to, I couldn't give you statistics, but to help keep people where they wanted to be. And what we did, everything was accomplished through social workers on staff who, you know, went in, interviewed the people, figured out where to go next. A bit, long story short. And we, I, a part of that was, one of the big pieces we did, and I know that's comparable to things going on around here, is we provided something on the order of 10,000 meals on wheels, elder meals on wheels a month. And I know that goes on here. My work involved, I was kind of an informal liaison. We were funded through, there was, there, there's a, in Massachusetts, there's a state office on elder affairs. And we were, I was kind of part of an informal liaison to the money people there, the finance people there, to help work, work with them and the rest of the network of elder service agencies that I kind of very informally represented.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
May I, I want to actually ask.
Yeah.
You know, I think your application is excellent, and you have, it sounds like you have great credentials. We need to hear the public comments still, but Madam Mayor, if you'd entertain us, make a motion to approve Mr. Adams.
Okay. But prior to that, do we have any questions for Mr. Adams here?
Yeah. Do you?
Nope. I think you're going to be good to go. All right. Thanks.
Well, I'm very happy then. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? All right, seen none. Do we have any other applicants here? I see none.
I would, I would like to amend my motion, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to move to approve David Adams and Flyanna Rogers. But I would like to just note for the record, I want to appreciate the staff at the Senior Center, because my understanding is Mr. Jackson is homeless, and he's someone who occasionally visits the center, and I just think it's great that we encouraged him to apply.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to make a note that last night, the BPAC decided on May 4th for a pedestrian walking tour of the city. And I'd very much like to invite Mr. Adams to join that for his perspective on pedestrianism. It's going to be on the 4th. Yes, at 10:00 AM. That will be publicly noticed. Great.
And I, I'd like to second that motion and just make a brief comment that I will enjoy, having Mr. Adams be, continuing to be a robust contributor to the Commission on Aging, and as well as a voting member now. And I was also duly impressed by Ms. Rogers's application, so I'm, I'm happy to make, second that motion.
Great. We've got a motion and a second from Member Bowers and Member Martinez.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. Next item, 12.2, presentation of the fiscal years 2019, '20, and 2020, '21 general fund baseline budget and five-year preliminary forecast.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As part of the 2019-21 budget development, staff has prepared a general fund baseline budget to evaluate the resources that are available to support operating expenditures, assuming no change to service levels. Staff has also prepared a five-year preliminary forecast to take a long-term view of the city's finance. During the presentation, staff will also present the 2018-19 proposed budget adjustments for council's consideration. Before we take a look at the general fund revenue and expenditure projections, we will revisit the city's budget principles. Before concluding the presentation, I will present the comments and recommendations from the Budget and Governance and Budget Advisory Committees. The city's budget policy states that current year expenditures should be supported by current year revenues. One-time money should be used for one-time expenditures or used to strengthen reserves. Appropriate fund balance should be maintained in all major operating funds. Unfunded liabilities should be identified and funded when surplus funds are available. CIP projects should be identified and prioritized, including related maintenance costs. These principles reflect best practices, best practices recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. No changes are recommended at this time. Next, let's take a look at the general fund revenues. Cannabis tax is the new revenue source in this fiscal year resulted from the passage of Measure S in November 2018, and 137,000 in revenue is expected in the current fiscal year. Fiscal year 2019 general fund revenues are expected to be higher than budgeted due to an increase in revenue assumptions and the new cannabis tax. There are peaks and valleys with development revenues. A portion of the revenue is considered non-recurring revenue, because we don't receive the same level of revenue every year. Revenue is expected to be higher than the original budget. Slow growth is expected in utility users' tax, and I will explain later. The city's revenue growth reflects the economic growth in the U.S. While the economy remains healthy, growth is expected to slow down. In terms of the long-term projection, estimates reflect conservative, sustainable revenues to support operating expenditures. This slide presents the general fund revenue trends. The table presents the actual revenues for fiscal years 2017 and 2018, and project revenues for fiscal year 2019. Sales tax is expected to grow by less than 3% over a three-year period. The, a new hotel was opened in the city in November 2016. Fiscal year 2018 is the, was the first year that the city recognized a full year of revenue, and revenue is expected to reach almost 8.6 million in the current fiscal year. Business tax includes business license tax, carroom tax, and cannabis tax. The amount for fiscal year 2018 includes 140,000 in one-time revenue associated with a tax discovery program. This level of revenue is not expected in future years. Utility users' tax is expected to be lower than budgeted due to the continued decline in telecommunications revenues and the decrease in natural gas usage. License and permit revenues fluctuate based on development activities. The revenue was 4.8 million in fiscal year 2017 and dropped to 3.9 million in fiscal year 2018. The revenue is projected at 4.7 million for the current fiscal year. Poverty tax and vehicle license fee in lieu are expected to increase due to the increase in assessed value. 25% of the tax income revenue is allocated to the general fund starting in fiscal year 2018. That's why you don't see an amount in fiscal year 2017. Franchise fees are expected to increase. Other revenues also include real property transfer tax. The amount for fiscal year 2018 is higher than the amounts for the other two fiscal years, mainly due to a few large transactions. One of the large property transfer, transaction generated more than 1 million in revenue. Also, the city received a $500,000 grant from ACTC in 2018, and this grant is also included in the 2019 projection. This slide presents the general fund revenues from fiscal year 2017 to fiscal year 2024. General fund revenues for fiscal years 2020 and '21 are projected at 44 million, expect to grow to 45 million in fiscal year 2022, 46 million in fiscal year 2023, and 47 million in fiscal year 2024. As you can see from the slide, sales tax, hotel tax, and business tax represent more than 3, 60% of the general fund revenue. These revenues are sensitive to business cycles. During an economic downturn, the city will experience contraction sooner than cities with a large poverty tax base. Next, let's take a look at general fund revenue growth assumptions. The assumptions are developed using historical information, economic forecasts, revenue consultants, and local information. The annual growth for sales tax is expected to range from 1.5% to 2.7% based on the estimates provided by the city's sales tax consultant. In working with the hotel operators, the growth for hotel tax is projected at 2% every year. Business license tax is expected to grow by 1.5% annually. The annual cannabis tax is projected at 360,000. If we receive more revenue, that's great. If not, we have sufficient revenues to support ongoing expenditures. Utility users' tax is expected to grow by less than 0.5% annually due to the continued decline in telecommunications revenues and isolation of solo alternatives and cost reduction in renewable energy. License and permit revenues are projected at a level that we can reasonably expect to achieve. If there are large development projects, revenues will be at, during the mid-cycle budget review. Poverty tax and vehicle license fee in lieu are expected to grow 3% annually. Reciprocal tax income revenue is expected to grow by 4% in fiscal year 2020, based on expected completion of certain development projects, and 3% in future years. Franchise fees are expected to grow by 3% annually. Real property transfer tax is expected to grow by 2% annually. For many of the recreation fees, a 3% increase is, is included in the projection. Staff will present a master fee schedule to the City Council in June. Some of the increase may be lower than the 3%. We'll take a comprehensive review of the fees. A 3% is just used for this budget projection. Next, let's take a look at the general fund expenditures. Fiscal year 2019 general fund expenditures are within budget. One-time savings are expected from vacant positions and cost reductions in other operating expenditures. The projection reflects baseline expenditures, assuming current service levels are maintained. New budget requests from departments are not included in the projection. The city's labor contracts will expire in June 2019. Since the city is in negotiations with employee groups, salary adjustments are not included in the projection. No increases, such as increase for medical insurance and maintenance costs, are included in the projection. This contract presents the fiscal year 2020 general fund expenditures by type. Salaries and benefits are the largest component of expenditures. It's about 53% of the general fund budget, or 23 million. The next big category is professional services. It's about 26% of the general fund budget, or 13 million. The, 11 million, sorry. The fire contract is included in this category. The contract amount for fiscal year 2020 is estimated at 7.5 million. Other significant operating expenditures include utilities and maintenance, supplies, insurance, and operating transfers to other funds. This slide presents the fiscal year 2020 general fund expenditures by department. Police and fire comprise more than 50% of the general fund budget. 32% for PD, 21% for fire, 9% for public works, 8% for community services, 10% for administration, 10% for community development, and 10% for non-departmental operations. Non-departmental operations include citywide expenditures such as janitorial services, general liability insurance, and operating transfers to other funds. Insurance premiums and claim expense are expected to increase significantly in the next five years. General fund liability and other insurance is expected to grow by more than 15% every year. Workers' compensation insurance is expected to grow by about 5% of the fiscal year 2020. The increase is due to increase in payroll, the pool's overall claim experience, the city's claim experience, and the increase in industry rates. This slide presents the citywide general fund and pension costs for other funds. They include normal costs and unfunded liabilities for safety and non-safety plans. Pension costs are expected to increase significantly due to CalPERS discount rate reduction to 7% between fiscal year 2018 and 2024. Pension costs are expected to more than double to 6.2 million. The increases for fiscal years 2020 and 2021 are projected at 21% and 10%. This slide presents the preliminary long-term forecast. Please note that recession factors are not built into the forecast. The deficit for 2021 will be eliminated when we present the proposed budget to the City Council in May. Expenditure is expected to outpace revenue in the long run, between fiscal year 2022 and 2024. The deficit is projected at 4.4 million. Expenditures are expected to increase by 3.8 million from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2021. A significant portion of the increase is due to rising pension costs. A surplus is expected in fiscal year 2019 due to an increase in revenue assumptions, one-time savings from vacant positions and other operating expenditures, and one-time cost shift to building and planning fees. We need to keep in mind that about $400,000 needs to be set aside for development activities. If the budget for fiscal year 2020 is set at a 43.6 million level, we need to transfer about 1 million to the Economic Uncertainty Fund to meet the city's 50% reserve requirement. The 50% reserve is calculated based on next year's general fund operating budget. This slide reminds us the city's pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. The city's net pension liability totaled 44 million, including 32 million for safety plans and 12 million for miscellaneous plans. The city has established a Section 115 pension trust to fund a portion of this liability. The OPAL liability totaled 7.9 million, with 4.4 million for city employees, and 3.5 million for the firefighters that went to work for the Alameda County Fire Department. Next, we'll take a look at the fiscal year 2018-19 proposed budget adjustments. This slide presents the general fund revenue adjustments. Budgets adjust based on current revenue trends. I will go over the significant budget adjustments. Hotel tax is expected to increase by 232,000 based on the updated estimates provided by hotel operators. Utility users' tax is expected to decrease by 67,000 due to the reasons I mentioned earlier. License and permit revenue is expected to decrease by 750... License and permit revenue is expect to decrease by 756,000, uh, mainly due to, um, uh, due to, uh, the, um, uh, due to expected development, uh, projects. Property tax is expect to increase by 263,000, uh, due to the increase in assessed value. Residual tax income and revenue is expect to decrease by 104,000 due to the anticipated funding distribution for the courtyard remediation project. Uh, the increase in other revenues is mainly from community services. This slide presents the general fund, uh, expenditure adjustments. One-time savings are expected from vacant positions and reductions in other operating expenditures. The, um, the savings are mainly from community development, non-departmental operations, police, fire, and public works. The 838,000 savings from community development are mainly, uh, due to awakened position and, uh, reduction to the professional service budget. The 200,000, uh, the 205,000 savings from non-departmental operations are mainly, um, due to the, um, the, uh, budget reduction, um, in, in the library service category. The anticipated increase from Oakland is not expect to occur in the current fiscal year. The savings, uh, from PD are mainly due to awakened positions. Um, the 175,000 savings from fire are mainly due to, uh, lower than budgeted contract amount and early payment of, uh, contribution for unfunded pension liability. The savings, uh, from public works are due to, uh, awakened positions. Uh, please note that many of the positions have been filled as of today. Uh, actual, uh, results may be different depending on operation, uh, operational, uh, outcomes. This slide presents, uh, other funds proposed budget adjustments. The significant adjustments are related to general plan maintenance fees and, uh, impact fees. Um, the amounts are just the base on expected development activities. Taking into consideration, um, credits received by developers and timing of projects. In terms of, uh, expenditures, the amounts are just the base on expected operational results. This slide presents the budget planning cycle. Uh, staff will present the capital improvement program to the city council on May 7th. Um, the proposed budget will be presented to the board, uh, joint budget committees on May 16. The proposed budget will be presented to the city council, um, on May 21st, and budget adoption is expected on June 4th. The, uh, general fund-based slide budget was revealed by the budget and governance and budget advisory committees on March 14th. Um, this slide presents the comments and recommendations from the joint committees. Um, use tactical strategies to invest money to fund pension obligations. Consider developing a policy for other post-employment benefits liability to set the funding level at 90%. Continue to look at new revenues and opportunities. The joint committees are recommend approval of the fiscal year 2018, 19 proposed budget adjustments. The joint committees continue to focus on the city's long-term fiscal health. This concludes my presentation. Staff would like to receive feedback from the city council regarding revenue and expenditure projections. Other comments and recommendations regarding budget strategies. Staff recommends that the city council approve the fiscal year 2018, 19 proposed budget adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Yes, Member Donahue.
The residual tax revenues that we get going down, you said because of our city property that has some work that needs to be done, a lot of toxics are underneath it. But aren't we expected to recover those costs in the long run?
Uh, the, the decrease in revenue is due to the, uh, expected funding distribution for the courtyard, uh, remediation project. In the 1920s, we submitted to the Department of Finance, we add back that project. And, um, because of that, the, uh, the revenue, um, for the general fund and other funds is expect to be reduced. So, once this project is completed, say, you know, in the next several years, right? We will expect to see more revenues coming back into the general fund and other funds.
Okay, but that will, how long will that take, do you think?
Um, Michael, I don't remember the timeframe.
So, Madam Mayor, if we might, um, so Councilmember Donahue, are you referring to the litigation that we're, um, pursuing in terms of trying to recover those costs?
Yeah, how do we, how do we account for that?
So, that would be a long-term revenue that if, if we were successful, we would receive. And I think this, um, the, the presentation of these numbers is really a year by year. So, we're just dealing with the impacts of the projected revenue, the projected revenue impact of just this year's, um, commitment to the courtyard project. So, the, the revenue recovery that you're referring to is more of a long-term, um...
And we don't see that because we don't know what it is?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may, ma'am?
You may.
And we would treat that as one-time funds because that's not an ongoing thing. So, we budget it separately.
Yes.
Any further clarifying questions?
Uh, just, I had another question about,
Yes.
general liability insurance. I mean, it's like, it looks like 18% a year for into the indefinite future. I mean, that's unbelievable. What's with that? I mean, okay, you know, maybe I'm just a-
Clarifying question is, what's with that?
So, so, Madam Mayor, we had the same reaction, um, as you can imagine. And one of the reasons this slide is, is included in the presentation is this isn't the first year this has happened. Um, it, I think it may be the first year we've illuminated it for you. Um, but because it is a trend, um, both a recent history trend and a, and a future continuing trend, we wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, we are a member of a pool, as the council is aware. Um, this is based on, as, um, as our finance director said, the experience of the pool, um, but also what our, um, representatives from the pool have described as a hardening of the market. So, we are not alone in seeing insurance costs increase based on the calamities in our region, for example. Um, but also our own experience, um, in terms of claims. But this is not something that, uh, is unique. I will also assure you that we worked with the pool to see if there was a way for Emeryville to reduce those costs, uh, for example, by increasing our self-insured retention. Um, we did a fairly, uh, in-depth analysis, and we could not achieve any cost reduction, um, any meaningful cost reduction.
Okay.
Thank you.
But this is why liability shields are so important.
Not a question.
Not a question.
Um, all right. It's in jeopardy, Vice Mayor. Um, all right, thank you, and let's take any public comment at this time. Public comment? All right, Mr. Carpio.
I'll make a public comment after. I want a photocopy of all those papers. I want to study the, the stuff myself, and I want to look for the discrepancy. What I, I want to look for these half a million dollars that was given away years ago, and we have no, no source of proof of what happened to it. So, I really want to see that. I want, I need the photocopy of, of the whole thing. At next city council meeting, then I'll come with my own opinion. Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this item? All right, see none. We want council discussion.
Can we make sure we get him a large print copy of that? Thank you.
All right, uh, anyone from our budget ad hoc committee care to kick us off with this?
I just want to thank staff for the, um, continuing work, um, on this budget and for the very clear-cut process that has been set forward. I also just want to highlight that expenditures are expected to outpace revenue even before we, uh, make adjustments for departmental requests and negotiations with our labor groups. Um, that said, I think we're in a good position, um, as a city, um, as compared to many of our neighbors. And, um, I'd like to thank the wisdom of previous, uh, council and for, um, longstanding staff and current staff, um, for keeping us on the right track.
Yeah. Member Bowers?
I just want to thank the staff. I want to thank Councilmember Martinez, the Budget Advisory Committee, and, uh, I agree with the baseline budget. Um, I just would, uh, highlight one slide in particular, which was things that the committees agreed to work on. I think that we do need to develop a policy around a minimum funding balance for OPEB in order to keep ourselves on pace with that. Um, I do believe in preparing and modeling for the next economic downturn. So, if we have, um, extra cash on hand, that we invest it wisely or hold on to it in unassigned accounts so that when we reach an economic downturn, we can invest in the market at a low time to yield a better outcome for our retirees. And, uh, yeah, as you see there, looking at new revenue opportunities, um, going forward. I think that's something we should do as well.
Any comments over here? Vice Mayor Pats, Member Donahue?
Well, I just think that, uh, the overall statement about us being a city that doesn't rely on property tax is true. And I don't think we're being excessively conservative at all by, by having a 50% reserve fund, given that we really are more sensitive to the business cycle than other cities. And I just think that, uh, we just really have to pay attention to our expenditures going forward, given the business cycle and it's just the nature of our city. This is something we really have to pay attention to.
So, overall, I really like, uh, I want to echo what Member Bowers said. My only thoughts are as we go forward and we do prepare for economic uncertainty, uh, the one area that strikes me every time when I look at our budget is how much we contract out. And I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 million. And it's a, a large portion, 10 million sounds wrong, I'm sorry. I'd have to go back.
About right. It's about right. A little bit over 11, 7.5 of that is fire.
Oh, okay. So, it's only 4 million. Okay, so again, that's where I would look to. I always feel we get so much more out of in-house as opposed to, I know, some of the things we have to contract out. But I would always like to look there as opposed to looking, uh, internally. So, that's just my one thought on top of everything else that's been said.
Thank you. Can it, uh, we go back to the discussion items slide?
Which slide?
The final slide.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate all the comments from my members and all the work that's already been done on this report. I think it gives us a very good first glance of where we're headed and what our budget conversations will be focused around. Um, and I appreciate the recommendations from the economic, uh, from the Budget Committee. And, um, yeah, I look forward to moving forward on this. So, do we have any more specific feedback to give, um, or comments and recommendations regarding the strategies? I don't have any at this time. I, I think the recommendations are appropriate. Okay.
So, what we need, Madam Mayor, is a, um, motion to approve the resolution, which would approve the mid-year budget adjustments for this fiscal year. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
The resolution?
Second.
All right, go to motion for Member Bowers. We've got a second for Member Martinez.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, 12.3, City Council Goals and Priority Projects.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you will recall that on January 29th, you had a study session to talk about your goals and priorities for next fiscal year. And as part of that, we revisited, uh, the list of, uh, priority projects and goals that you adopted last March or April. Um, and we talked through those and the status of those. And, uh, many of those, we, you indicated you wish to carry forward because they had not been completed. And you agreed at that point on a list of 10 new priority projects, um, and goals for the coming fiscal year. Those are presented in this report for the public. I will read through those. South Bayfront Bridge, Housing Bond Expenditure Plan and Courtyard Remediation, Active Transportation Safety, including mu- multimodal connectivity and the redesign of 40th Street, the Arts Center, Disaster Preparedness, Parking Management, Rail Safety in Quiet Zones, Revenue Generating Balance Measures for 2020, other revenue op- and other revenue opportunities within the next two-year budget cycle, Library Services, Cultivating a Healthy Organization, Be a Model Employer and Build Capacity for Excellent Service. And under that, uh, we had identified Build a Code Enforcement Program. So, we are before you tonight, asking you to make any modifications that you would see necessary, and then approve these by motion as your goals for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? See none. Any public comment on this item? All right, I'll open it for, up for discussion or emotion? Yes.
So, on item 10A, I would like to recommend that we take that out of 10A because that's a, code enforcement program does not fit with improving employee relations and, and making us a, a model employer. I think it fits better under item 6, Parking Management. We could call it Parking Management and Code Enforcement, or we could just call it Code Enforcement and Parking Management. Just seems to me that all goes together as an enforcement line versus having this as a, we want to add another, uh, department or employee under our goals. And I say this because we've talked about a couple of things this evening that are big costs for us, and one of them is workers' comp. And as we become a model employer and really look at how we serve our employees, we know that's one of the ways you help keep down your workers' comp costs. It also helps with overall health and wellness. And so, I really want this to be something that we focus in on. And, and really, to me, it's a, it's about living our values and reaping economic benefit from that. It's, it's just one of those, I'm going to use a hackneyed phrase, it's a win-win. So, I really would like to separate those two things out. So, with that suggestion, um, I would move approval.
I would just ask that we make it item 11, thanks, it doesn't go with parking management. It's designed to be code enforcement for buildings and infrastructure to allow us to abate nuisances. It's not the same thing, but I appreciate Councilmember Pats's remarks. And so, if you'll accept a friendly amendment, it should just be item 11, I think.
11 being my favorite number, I love that idea.
Okay. Yes, Member Martinez?
A question for staff. Could, uh, Christine, would you remind me why, um, corporate, courtyard remediation fell under Housing Bond Expenditure Plan? I feel like I have a guess, but I don't know if I'm correct.
It's tied to the development of the other parcels out there. The sort of the domino impact of, um, getting that done so that then the affordable housing can be built at the marketplace parcels.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, question? All right, I believe we had a motion and a second.
I'll second it if it's-
Yes, with the exception of the, yeah.
Yes, then I, I second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion from Vice Mayor Pats and a second from Member Bowers.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well done. Next up, uh, 12.4, Update on Assembly Bill 147, Use Taxes. Or Used Taxes, depending on how you read it.
I would like to provide the city council, uh, an update regarding this bill. Based on the latest information provided by the, uh, city's sales tax consultant, this bill is in the Senate for a third reading, and it's expected to be signed by the governor next week.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, this item was included on your agenda at, um, as a result of discussion at your legislative priorities, uh, meeting. And so, we provided a report with the information that we could pull together. If there are additional questions, um, that you'd like us to pursue tonight, we're happy to do so. Um, as our finance director mentioned, the information we have is that, assuming this passes through, it's likely to be signed as early as April 8th.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions?
I, I have a couple.
Okay, Member Donahue.
So, does this mean that not just residents ordering things online from out of state would be taxed, assuming they meet the parameters of the bill, but also businesses within our city, same thing? We would get that, uh, sales tax money credited to our city?
It will come through the county, uh, pool, not come into the city directly.
Yes. But it would be business and residences?
Right.
Okay.
Any other clarifying questions? All right, I'll open this up for public comment on this item. See none, uh, just any discussion on 8147? Yep?
I just want to thank staff in Townsend for pulling this together. I would just note that the passage of this bill estimates additional $200,000 in tax revenue for the city, so I support it.
Great. Um, any other comments on this bill? Do we need to make a motion on this, or is this just an update?
Simply for information.
All right. Thank you for that update. We'll see action on it soon. All right, if that's all of them, we are just whipping through this agenda. Thirteen point one, Department head of reports, Planning Director's Report.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, this is my monthly report to you on the recent planning commission meetings. The last commission meeting was last Thursday, March 28. There were two items on their agenda. I would note that Commissioner Keller had an excused absence, so there were six commissioners present. The first item was a request for a one-year extension of a conditional use permit and design review permit for a proposed 29-unit residential project with four to six live-work units called Adeline Springs at 3637 Adeline Street. The commission approved that extension request unanimously, six to zero. That decision is appealable to the city council within 15 days. The appeal deadline is next Friday, April 12. And of course, if the council wishes to appeal that decision to yourselves, this would be the time to do so. The second item was a zoning text amendment, an amendment to the planning regulations to allow research and development uses in the mixed use with residential zoning district. And this recommendation was approved unanimously, six to zero, by the commission, of course, because it would be an amendment to the planning regulations. It does require passage of an ordinance by the city council. So we will forward the commission's recommendation to you and bring you the first reading of the ordinance. I don't recall the exact date. I think it might be the first meeting in May, but it certainly will be within your next few meetings. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Yes, Member Donahue.
When the Jelly Bean Square item came up about having potential utility equipment on the roofs that's related to research and development right next to residential neighborhoods and noise, did that combo get discussed?
I don't recall that that specific issue got discussed. It was pointed out to the commission that this is a proposed zoning text amendment to make such uses conditionally permitted, not specifically to permit anything at this time at that location. So any future application for such a use would require a conditional use permit if this were to, if this code amendment were to be approved.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Any other questions? All right then, future agenda item requests from council members. Who's got some? No one, okay. Then this meeting is adjourned to 8:25. Wow. That is magical. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, twelve point three, city council goals and priority projects.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you will recall that on January 29, you had a study session to talk about your goals and priorities for next fiscal year, and